I'll call this meeting of the City of Urbana Committee of the Hall to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson's not here. Ms. Marlin? Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Okay, are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, is there staff reporting in addition to the two items on the agenda? Okay, so first up is Economic Development Activities Report from CD.
For some announcements related to economic development and other community development personnel, I'm pleased to announce that Pauline Tannos is our new Public Arts Coordinator. She's been working as our Public Arts Intern and has been doing a fabulous job in that position, as I'm sure you've noted, and pleased that she's been able to accept this position for us. Also, two of the individuals in community development have been granted, following exam and certain amount of years, working in the area of planning with the AICP designation. That's the American Institute of Certified Planners. And this has been awarded to our Economic Development Manager, Brandon Boyes, as well as our Planner Two, Kevin Garcia. So congratulations to Brandon and Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, looking at our Economic Development Report for January 2015, just some highlights. Downtown will be welcoming a comic book store for all your comic book needs, Action Jackson Comics. Also, I'm sure that you hopefully have read about Strawberry Fields reopening with the owners of the World Harvest International Food, and reopening again the cafe, as well as the natural foods market there. We will soon be issuing a request for proposals. Actually have two of those ready to be issued, one for the block north of City Building here, 209th Street, and one for block of property along Broadway, fronting along Broadway. And we will be announcing these releases at our next Business and Development Lunch, which will be next Tuesday. The topic for that lunch, luncheon, would be Pitch Perfect. And we've invited a number of local realtors to pitch sites and developments to our business community. So this would be what was previously known as the Developers Roundtable Luncheon next Tuesday. Other things to announce, renovations on North Cunningham Avenue for the Urbana True Tyres are just about complete. And you'll recall that that is a relocation of the business that was on the block north. That will be facilitated. Another project that we've all worked on had multiple phases reached a watershed in this report, where we have now deeded the property of the Hanford Inn to Kelly Dillard as part of that agreement. That's a big milestone for the city. We had the first annual Community Supported Agriculture Fair, CSA Fair at the Civic Center on January 21st. And this was put together and run by our Market at the Square Director, Natalie Kenny-Marcas. Great success. It was really interesting to learn about all of our local CSA's. And they were very, very satisfied with the event. So we look forward to a bigger event next year. On public arts, we've just completed the intake for the current round of the grant program. We had 44 applications. We have some other programs underway. City of Urbana Raises Your Art is a call for entries for the banners along the Boneyard and Broadway. We also held a naming contest for the Boneyard Creek Improvement Project, get a little shorter name perhaps, and received many, many entries for that. And there's a jury that's been established to review those submittals. You look out here on the corridor, and there's a great presentation there with the Wiley Elementary School and the artwork. And I believe that there's a fashion show connected to the exhibit that the children will be presenting here. You may also have read in the paper that the governor's process for selection of those medical cannabis dispensary and cultivation center licenses has been completed. And there've been, in our district, two cannabis dispensaries were awarded. And this is District Nine of the police districts, and both of these are in Urbana. So the top scorer is New Med RX, which has a lease on the old Blockbuster building at five points. And the second was Phoenix, who has a lease on the property at the northwest corner of Racine University. And just looking through the report, awful lot of activity. We were very anxious to have some of our economic development positions posted, because we do still have vacancies there in Economic Development Coordinator, Economic Development Specialist. So we're anxious to get some help. And you can see that there's quite a bit of activity that's ongoing, even with the reduced staff. Any questions on this report? Diane, oh, sorry.
Do you expect the two dispensaries to actually open within a block of each other?
The state really appears to be asking the second license holder to relocate further.
Further in Urbana, or further away from the city?
And they're interested in opening in Urbana, because, you know, they like the welcoming that the city provided. However, if you recall from the zoning text case, there are limited locations because of the distance requirements in the zones.
Right.
And in addition, they would need to find a location that makes sense from a business standpoint, and where there's an available property.
But it's financially feasible for two medical marijuana dispensaries in the same city?
This was a very competitive process. And I think there's real interest in following up. There's been quite an investment made on all the applicants. So they do seem very serious about it.
Anyone else to follow up on that? And so city staff are providing help?
Yes, we are. Yes, we're working with Phoenix, who's the second license holder, to identify other locations that might work for them.
Well, I would, not to be redundant, but I would share the same concern that Diane has. I'm just not sure that, based on the number of folks who've qualified at this point, and I understand this is kind of an emerging market. But, you know, I guess the market will shake out. And maybe the competition of two will set a price that's a little more competitive for the folks who are using it. But it sure doesn't seem to me like, based on my initial review anyway, that there is, there is an appetite, so to speak, for two businesses to prosper under the current market.
It's very interesting to see what scarcity does to business proposals. There's a scarcity of licenses that were out there. And we did have four entities that applied. And again, you know, a lot of investment, a lot of trouble, just for two licenses that were issued within this nine-county area. So I think, I think it's an emerging market, but also there's the prospect of the scarcity as well.
Well, it's an emerging market. But I think more importantly, this is the camel's nose under the tent. I think we, we all realize that there could be much more to come here in a few years. And if you're established, that gives you a leg up on the competition and the out years. So I think that's really what's going on here. But I'm actually, I actually ultimately don't have a problem with, with two in town, because I think they'll compete against, against each other, at least initially. And that might keep their prices somewhat in check.
Okay, okay. Anything else on this one? Okay, next up is a presentation on the 2014 Urbana Business Survey Results.
Okay, so this presentation is going to be made by Myles Thomas. And Myles is an Economic Development Associate with the City of Urbana. He's a master's student in urban and regional planning here at the University of Illinois. And he has worked with the analysis and the report that he'll be presenting this evening.
So I'm just loading this up here. Again, I'm Myles Thomas, Economic Development Associate. I previously worked for almost two years in North Carolina as a concurrent planning administrator for the towns of Marshville, Midland, and Rockwell. And I wanted to get some more experience and get my master's degree before I felt it was too late. So I have returned to get my master's in urban planning and really look forward to working with all of you as I present to you in the City of Urbana. So for the purposes of getting all the information out there to, for you all to compare in this business survey report, I'm going to go ahead and advance through the results. And then, if you could, just hold questions until the end, and I'll go back through them if there's any questions about specific charts, or graphs, or just questions about the report in general.
There's Adobe sending you a message on there, perhaps?
If it will let me load. I'll just leave it like this, and we'll go through it. It looks like it's messing up when I go fullscreen. All right. City staff conducted the 2014 Urbana Business Survey in the fall of 2014 in order to assess the dynamics of the business community. This derived results from businesses all across Urbana's major business districts. Results were utilized to realize trends in the economic market and gather quantitative and qualitative analyses of business operation, employment, and general satisfaction with organizations and services in Urbana. This first chart goes over the categories that businesses were asked to identify themselves with. Businesses were asked to identify the category that they would place themselves in based on the North American Industry Classification System, NAICS. Though many businesses that answered the survey classified themselves as the other category. Staff researched the, the category that they put themselves in and compared it to the descriptions for the NAICS table, and sorted those other categories back into the generalized descriptions. A wide selection of businesses were classified as food and dining establishments, which is likely attributed to the number of new restaurants and cafe options that have opened in downtown Urbana, downtown Urbana and southeast Urbana, for that matter. With more daily restaurants and casual dining options, we've also seen a renewed interest in the number of professional services firms that have chosen to locate near those amenities, which is our, another leading category of businesses represented in this survey. The responses indicated a great number of businesses that have been open between one to 15 years, or more than 30 years. This is consistent with a number of long-term businesses remaining open with consistent growth, and a number of new businesses trying, trying their model for the first time and seeing their, their success and growth over time. So we've got more of a kind of median number of businesses that have been open between those, those two ranges. But the long-term businesses, we were very happy to see 21 businesses that have been, have been open in Urbana alone for 35 or more years. I think the, the longest that a business reported being open was 102 years in the Urbana area. Okay. When asked about employment two years ago, there were a large proportion of businesses that employed between one and five part and/or full-time workers, with at least one company employing between 150 to 200 part-time and another full-time employees. The, by 2014, we saw that the number of employees pushed, that the larger number of employees had pushed from, from that one to five category into the six to 10, or 16 to 50 employees per business. One company reported in 2014 that they employed over 200 full-time employees and another 202 part-time employees. Overall, businesses had positive responses about their visibility in parking in general. The response regarding proximity to restaurants and bars, helping their business model, was a little more average. There, there were less, less companies that, or businesses that indicated that was a factor in the success of their model. But there, there were probably about 40 or so out of the 130 respondents that weren't even located near a restaurant or bar. So we, we see that as being one of the contributing factors that led them to say that was less important to their model. Respondents found overall that traffic congestion was not an issue with their location, and found that there was plenty of vehicular traffic. A few more respondents indicated a slightly negative outlook on the amount of foot traffic. But again, it was an overall positive response. We followed up with a few more questions related to location, with most people indicating overwhelmingly positive responses related to ease of access, their location, and safety. A few respondents in southeast Urbana did indicate in the open commentary that we compared and found that they were the ones that, were the ones that had more of a negative response about safety. But in the same comments, most of them mentioned that they were impressed with the police response time and presence in that area. Businesses with budgets in excess of $100,000, $100,000 accounted for 51% of all respondents, with 18% of those in the $1 million to $50 million range. Taxes garnered a more widespread of responses. A few people commenting in the open commentary section that property taxes were a contributing factor in their response. Thinking back to their position two years ago, only 17% of businesses felt that their business had declined compared with now, stating that they expected their business, 97% expecting their business to either remain stable or grow. A few businesses indicated that they were not aware of the city's incentive programs, which correlated in the location response that they were outside of the districts where the city is currently able to provide either tax increment financing incentives or enterprise zone incentives. Although Economic Development staff recently submitted their application for a new enterprise zone, which will allow some additional incentive opportunities in these underserved areas. More respondents indicated a positive outlook on the local economy than they did the overall economy. They indicated positively overall that Urbana was a great place to do business, and comparatively a positive response to Urbana being a great place to live. Respondents were asked to grade services and/or organizations offered in the community on a sliding scale if they had experience with the listed item. Percentages on the right-hand side of this chart, which I apologize, is a little difficult to read, were, indicate the level of familiarity. So the higher the percentage on the right-hand vertical access, axis, indicates the, the number of respondents that answered the negative to positive scale. Others indicated they had no experience, or didn't know what the organization was or did. So, though less familiar to respondents, those that did have experience with the Champagne County Economic Development Corporation rated that organization at the top of their list for satisfaction. Out of more familiar organizations, police and fire, among other Urbana city departments, garnered at least 75% positive responses. For respondents with experience with fire inspections or law enforcement, both highly recognizable, they rated those items at the top of the list. Urbana's Market at the Square was familiar to 77% of respondents and garnered a highly favorable rating. Bicycle lanes garnered the most negative response out of those familiar with them. But comments also indicated that there was less of an inherently negative response and more of a response indicating that they could potentially be improved upon, although no suggestions were made. That's all I have for you in this presentation. If you'd like to ask me any questions at this time, feel free.
Questions? Dennis?
Yeah, it's probably really good that we're taking, taking a look at our, the, the business, the business response in this community, because we are concerned about economic growth and retention of businesses.
Absolutely.
So this is comparative to a couple of years ago. It's interesting to see, you know, where there were, what you might call deficits in public approval, I guess. I thought many parks was a rather kind of strange addition to the survey, because we have so few of them. Can you expound about what, how that reflects into the business satisfaction level of being in Urbana?
Many parks was included in, in the, in this section of the survey, because there are, at least one many park near downtown Urbana that kind of may potentially serve as a meeting ground for businesses in the area, or it may serve as just a kind of a community space that may improve the attraction for the downtown business area. So we wanted to see if that had any influence or impact on businesses' perception of the area that they choose to locate in.
And what can you tell me about the perception of how easy it is, or how pleasant it is to get a special event permit?
The, well, it was, it was just a kind of general response. So for special event permits, about 75% indicated that they, that it was either, they were satisfied with the process, or satisfied with the, the permit requirements itself. I didn't particularly see any notable comments further into the survey that would have indicated that people were following up on that response with any criticisms, or just kind of general comments.
And then, so I think what, what I thought about this report then after reading it is, it doesn't really then take the next step of like suggesting ways forward. So that was not then the purpose of this survey? Is to like propose then areas of improvement?
Well, the, the purpose of the survey was to gather the, the general consensus about how people felt about these things, or, or really their, their level of perception about these services that are offered, so that we could see the areas that were potentially problems, and analyze the comments that were related to them to make plans for our, our future actions, and where we would need to make improvements.
So it would be up to maybe the city council to propose then? Or maybe staff to come up with workshops? Or in, you know, some kind of exploratory process to create improvements in certain areas?
Sure. I, I think, I think it's a balance between what staff may, may begin to investigate and suggest as areas of improvement, which we would then factor into the decisions that we make as a department. And that would, that would come to you to, to observe the strides we're making in improving those, those things within the community.
And at what time in the future do you think that there's going to be adequate number of years passed before we do this again? Is it something we should do every, every couple of years?
The last survey was performed in 2010. We did make some comparisons between 2010 and 2014 for kind of internal review on, on how we had improved since then. The services and organizations charts and the questions associated with them weren't included in 2010, so this is kind of new to our process. But I believe a, a structured schedule, where we're constantly comparing this data after a number of years reviewing how we've performed, I think that's a, a solid way forward.
Okay. Every three years?
Yet, were public sector employers invited to fill this out to the county, the school district? Or is it just private businesses?
I'm sorry, the, was the survey offered to?
Yeah.
The, the survey was offered to all incorporations listed on, on various databases. We reached out to about 900, 900 companies, organizations. We did get a few responses from religious institutions, university. So there's, there's a variation on public and private input.
And then, and the total response was 130?
130.
So I guess my initial impression is it's useful, but you're only getting like one point of view from each business, the manager, the owner, or something.
And we did actually have multiple responses from many businesses. So we had to do a little bit of data analysis to see how the responses from employers versus employees factored in. So some of those were consolidated if they were very similar in nature. And some of those were, were such distinct, different views on, on, on the questions we posed, that they were, they were totaled in that 130. So they were kept in as, as separate responses. So we feel like we got a pretty good balance. But it may be interesting in the future to kind of extend that to both management and the people that are working within these institutions.
Yeah, I think that'd be interesting. I think it'd be probably a different set of questions. But it would be interesting, because we have so many people working in Urbana that don't live here, to find out what we could do to help them decide to live here, that sort of thing.
Absolutely.
Dan?
Yeah, just to follow up on, I think the direction Bill was going. You said 95% of the respondents were locally owned businesses? I mean, that's what it said in here. So, and when you look, and we look at the number of employees, you know, the vast, vast majority of the respondents have fewer than 50 employees, which means all of our big employers did not respond to this survey, like DART, or Flexingate, or Frasca, or Health Alliance, or Carl, or the university, or a city government, or a county government, or the school district, or the MTD. So I, I think we need to be cautious in interpreting, taking these responses too far, because we are, we're missing most of the big employers in town.
And in some cases, like Health Alliance, and some other, some other organizations that are in Urbana, the respondents took it as, I guess, their department within those organizations. So we did receive some responses where they were focused on the, the people that they oversee, rather than the, the management scale that was, you know, the 400 employees that may work for a division of Carl, or, or something like that. So there is some of that in there, but I agree that that may not be enough to reach out to those larger companies that are large employers in Urbana.
And, and if you're, you know, if you've got, if you've got to deal with a corporation, you may not be able to answer until you go through corporate headquarters or something. But I'm just thinking of like Walmart and Meyer. And, I mean, there's just, I'm, I'm not sure. This is good information for small, locally owned businesses of under 50 people. But I'd be very, I mean, we don't have responses representing a large employer. So how do we, how do we get that?
Our strategy will, will probably have to expand. We'll have to reach out to some other communities that have maybe gone after how you get those employers to respond. Like you said, a lot of times, you know, they're not able to. Like the, the corporate management for, for a facility here that's part of a, a national organization, they may not be able to respond to these surveys, or they're not allowed to engage. So we'll, we'll be looking into opportunities to increase our, our reach in terms of who responds to this in the future.
Did any of the large rental property owners respond?
Yes. We got quite a number of responses from real estate and developers, brokers and developers. Real estate was actually one of the larger Real estate was actually one of the, uh, larger categories included in this, uh, response.
Okay, good. But still under fifty employees?
Some of them, yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? So just real quickly, uh, when, when do you folks sort of think, when are you thinking of repeating this and maybe adding some variations suggested here?
We need to discuss internally when our next, uh, process will be, but, you know, I think we'd like to see a, a sooner cycle rather than waiting another four years, um, to reach out to, to our business community, but I think that's kind of a, a balance.
Yeah, I, I think three years would be, would be good. It can take up to a year to administer and analyze and all that. Certainly evolved since we first started doing these. And some of the focus has been on business and, you know, maybe we need something that's a little more just about employees or employers. And I do know that there's a, um, employee survey underway, um, a private, uh, privately done survey, so that'll be interesting to see the results of that. But we might want to expand the focus and, um, of course, we do retention visits, so we get, um, we do these visits with all the large employers and we get very focused information from them. So this is just one of the pieces of information that we're able to get and to use to inform us.
And historically, um, we have, we have, we've been really good about doing business follow-ups with businesses that have received incentives, but recently we've, we've been really pushing to contact businesses throughout Urbana and hearing from them about what their strategies are and, and even seeing what, what, what we can do, uh, for businesses that may not be an incentive district. So we are doing that kind of internal follow-up to reach out to the community, to the businesses that are throughout this community.
Okay, Mike then Ellen, uh, Mike then Diane.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your last comment as a small business owner, um, although I would phrase it a different way, it's not what can the city do for, uh, small businesses, it's, uh, what can the city do to get out of the way of small businesses? That's how I would put it. I got a couple of comments, um, and, and I would agree with Diane and I, look, I commend you guys on your work, it's, it's too bad that you're not getting more respondents, but if you're getting respondent, responses from maybe not the owners of small businesses, or if you're getting multiple responses from the same business, or if you're getting responses from divisions of a larger business, those are all problems that hopefully the next time we can try to overcome by just only accepting, uh, comments from the business. I'm, I'm not so sure that getting, getting a response from a small division of one business, uh, that is diverse, that is large, is helpful. In fact, it might skew the results and be unfavorable one way or the other to the city. I shouldn't say unfavorable, just not be accurate. I thought it was, um, I'm not going to put too much into it because of, um, the comments here about, uh, who you got responses from and, and that kind of thing, but, um, I do think that, um, it was interesting to me that, um, forty-seven percent of the respondents or, well, it's kind of hard to tell by the bar chart, but anywhere between forty-five and fifty percent of the respondents, uh, do not agree that Urbana is an excellent place to do business. Yet, an overwhelming number of folks, uh, who responded said Urbana is an excellent place to live. Well, guess what? I'm one of those people. Not a respondent, um, 'cause I don't remember actually getting a call to respond, uh, I'm not sure how that happened, uh, but I would agree, it's an excellent place to live. My family lives here, my daughter goes to public school here, we love the school, um, we love a whole lot of things about Urbana, but we, we can do a better job of being more hospitable to small business. So I, I commend you on your work and I hope we can keep plugging away at that. And then the other point that I wanted to bring up too is, um, sixty-five percent of tho- of the respondents, uh, thought that the, uh, local economy is, they disagreed that it is performing well. So I think there's obviously a lot of things we can work on and I know everybody's working hard to do that, uh, but I think, um, a, a whole lot of this is out of the, is out of the staff's, uh, control and purview and it's all about policy and it's all about the tax base and those kind of things. And, uh, hopefully we can keep working on that and, uh, and, uh, working with local realtors, uh, and doing what everybody up here has been talking about, get these folks to, to, to be putting out the word that Urbana is a good place to live. It has a, the best school district in the area, uh, and those kind of things. So those are kind of things I think we ought to focus on and frankly, I think three years is a good target for a new, uh, a new survey because by then hopefully some things have, uh, changed and progressed and, um, some of the folks up here who've, who've talked about, uh, improving the, uh, the, uh, business climate in Urbana, uh, work hard and follow through on that.
Bill?
All right, um, I was a little confused by that, but I, the local economy is performing well, shows a bar with forty-three percent somewhat agree and ten percent agrees, that's fifty-three percent, so less than fifty percent.
And those are actual responses, they're not percentages, so the, the bar indicates the number of-
But the numbers are higher, I guess, than, okay. Okay, it is hard, but it's, the local economy, the local economy is doing better than the overall economy, that's what I was looking at. So, well, by, oh, yeah, the scale's a little different. By a little bit there and two, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't realize this wasn't a percentage and it was a number of responses, so that's why now when I look at it, I see it doesn't add up to a hundred, so that makes sense.
And I think overall your, your comments were on point in, in how you analyzed it, but it gives you the same impression.
Just curious, on page eighteen, um, one of the customer services was business counseling. What is, what, what kind of counseling was that? Who was doing it?
Business counseling comes, comes from all, all, all sorts of private and public institutions, so, uh, SCORE, the small business, um, I'm sorry, I can't remember the-
Through SBDC?
SBDC. So that was more of an overarching question about satisfaction with the, uh, business counseling that's offered throughout the community, not a specific, uh, entity.
Just in general?
In general.
Okay. So that would, so how do you interpret that? Is that, that people would like more business counseling, better quality, more targeted? What, any comments to follow up on that?
I was curious and I don't know the answer, but I did see that seemed kind of like dissatisfaction with business counseling, but then if you flip to page nineteen, you'll see that, um, the SBDC was rated very positively. So, uh, there's something we're not capturing between, these, these were not consistent and I don't, I'm not sure, uh, we know exactly why we have disparity there.
And then making the comparison there, so that's, um, thirty-one percent of respondents actually had, um, experience working with SBDC, so business counseling may not correspond to, to those that, that worked with SBDC. People may have been saying they, they felt they didn't know about or didn't have business counseling available to them by indicating a negative response. So, so the, the thirty-one percent of people that actually did have business counseling with SBDC indicated that they had a positive experience.
Okay.
Some, some areas to follow up in, so, anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the January twenty-six, twenty-fifteen meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Dennis Roberts, second by Aaron Ammons. Any corrections, changes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. And next up is, uh, public input, uh, first I have from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, uh, representing themselves. They don't wish to, to address the committee at this time, but ask that, uh, our position be under the record as, that we are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision's sewer problems. Uh, next up is, uh, Daryl Cruz.
Hello, uh, thank you for your time. I certainly don't want to make this a habit and I just felt compelled to come and make a comment. During last Monday's council discussion on tasers, it was both surprising and troubling to hear the mayor use the term "policism" as in "ism" compared to racism to care, to characterize members of the public who were questioning the UPD's use of, and city council's decision, uh, to purchase tasers. What exactly was the mayor suggesting by her use of the term "policism"? Was she referring to the behaviors and attitudes of those who challenge or question inappropriate or unlawful police behavior and conduct? Was she referring to those who ask why racial disparities exist in local law enforcement practices? Was she referring to those who argue for the need for more public transparency and oversight of police conduct? Or was she simply suggesting a "polis" is a person with a negative attitude toward the police who shows no appreciation for the difficult work they do? The citizens who spoke to the council, admittedly emotional at times, to share their feelings and thoughts bearing upon the council's decision to purchase tasers and related policies, were not engaging in "policism," as she inferred, but rather participatory democracy at a public meeting involving free speech, which at times was messy and uncomfortable. Frequent editorialist in the news gazette Leonard Pitts recently wrote, "To oppose police brutality is not to oppose police. No one with a brain stands against police when they do the dangerous and often dirty job of safeguarding life and property." In a similar vein, "To oppose tasers is not to oppose police. To oppose racial disparities is not to oppose the police. To oppose inappropriate use of force is not to oppose the police. To oppose militarization of the police is not to oppose the police. To ask for public transparency and oversight of police conduct is not to oppose the police." Mr. Pitts continued, "Support good cops, oppose bad ones. You'd think that's a self-evident imperative, but it turns out some of us are unwilling to make the distinction. Critiquing police behavior, voicing concerns about new and advanced policing tools, demanding well-written policies that protect civil rights while allowing the police to safeguard our community is not to oppose the police, nor is it policism." I'm not sure what the mayor was trying to convey when she used the word "policism," but it appears she has failed to make the distinction Mr. Pitt was referring to. If she believes those of us who came to speak Monday night were engaging in policism, she is absolutely mistaken. She owes them an apology. Thank you.
Questions for Daryl?
I do.
Mike?
I'll go. I'll be your huckleberry. So, um, let me pose a hypothetical to you. Would there have been anything that we could have done additionally that would have made you support tasers?
Well, if you're speaking to me personally-
You personally or your group? I don't care.
I'm, I'm here just speaking as an individual.
Okay.
And I came to speak just to the issue of the use of the term "policism." And as far as the city council's lengthy consideration and openness and ability to have public comment, uh, no, I don't, I'm not necessarily in disagreement with that anything the city council chose, how they chose to conduct that particular topic over the past twelve months.
Well, that, my question wasn't about process, it was about, was, was there anything more we could have done for you to support the police having tasers?
No, I think you did, but you felt adequate and able to do.
But you would have continued to oppose regardless? Is that what I'm getting?
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that I totally oppose tasers. What I'm suggesting is that I think there needs to be the appropriate safeguards and ordinance language and training and other sorts of issues that are accounted for, and I'm speaking for myself-
Okay.
-in terms of the seriousness with which we give tools to police officers to use in our community.
I understand all that and I appreciate your answer and I appreciate your engagement throughout this process, this almost one-year process.
Yeah.
And ultimately, I think we got it right. I think we have, uh, a policy that is above and beyond any in the nation and I think we have our chief of police and our legal counsel and our city staff with the input of the community to thank for that. So I think this continued effort to, to somehow say, uh, that our police department is nothing but, um, engaged in the community and, and working for the community and trying to keep the community safe, I just, I frankly resent the continued efforts for folks, uh, uh, by folks in the community to, to somehow run down the police department. I think they're doing an outstanding job, uh, and I think there are no instances of brutality or misuse, uh, of, of police power that have come to light. In fact, we have a citizens', uh, review board that is also, uh, uh, you know, what a whole lot of communities do not have, it's above and beyond. And, uh, so I for one am just going to stand up for the police and stand up, uh, for the people in my ward who are very appreciative of the protection that they provide.
Okay, I would simply say-
We're, we're straying off the topic here, so-
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not disagreeing, that's not the issue I'm bringing up tonight, it's simply the use of a term to characterize the public when they were addressing the city council. And I certainly support the police and appreciate the work the police do and certainly to infer that I don't is not true. It has nothing to-
I didn't, I didn't imply that. What I'm saying is, I'm getting, um, I'm just, I'm growing tired of folks, um, just running down the police in this town, not being involved in the community. Uh, we have a police chief who has visited fifty-two churches in, over a year and a half. Fifty-two!
I'm not speaking to the chief or the police, I was speaking to the comment.
But lots of people did, Daryl, so I'm going to take this, because you brought it up, I'm going to take this chance to defend him and to defend the police department and to talk about what a fine job they do and what a hard job they have to do and a whole lot of folks around here don't appreciate it and think that they're somehow being overly oppressed when the fact of the matter is, uh, folks who have a problem with this are, by and large, the folks who are committing crime in this community. So that is why they are being "policed," quote unquote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move on. What we'll do is we'll get the staff report on the next item, motion for Brick Street reconstruction with concrete, Broadway Avenue, and then we'll get the two, uh, items of public input.
Charlie? Before that, could I do a public input thing?
Oh, okay, sure.
Uh, and it just came up as we sat down here at the table because, I, and I, I just wanted to say that, um, okay, so when we arrived here at the city council building, we found, some of us found on our desks, um, a package from our sister city, our newest sister city in France, Tionville. And what they've sent to us is, um, a book, picture book of their community with all kinds of photographs in it, uh, so that we can understand, know them, appreciate them a little bit better. A newspaper from the Christmas edition, I guess, of a special edition of their community newspaper, in which there is a two-page display, uh, of the sister city visit to Tionville that happened in, um, November. Uh, and we were invited, I want, I want to just indicate to everybody that, um, it took about two years to establish the sister city relationship and we didn't approach them. They actually sought us out when one of their members of their city staff, uh, was at the University of Illinois and called me and called the mayor and asked to have a, um, a meeting to see if we'd be interested in becoming a sister city for them. And one of their, um, one of their interests that they, we- And one of their, one of their interests that they, we found out about was that they have a very deep regard for the veterans who served in World War II, who were helping to liberate their community and their nation from Axis occupation. And after we agreed to become a sister city with them, only after we found a person in our, in our community and who joined our committee, who was fluent in French, because I am not, we felt, I felt that we had to wait until we got a person who could be an ambassador to the city, who could speak the language fluently and had the enthusiasm. So that person did step forward, and therefore in July, we did pass a resolution on ordinance, establishing the sister city relationship with Tournville, France. Immediately, we were asked to come and visit them, and the reason was that they were going to celebrate the 70th anniversary of the liberation of France after World, at the close of World War II. And they really wanted us to participate, and they really wanted a veteran from our community to come to be honored at that ceremony. And we were very fortunate to have Kermit Harden and his family join us on that trip. Some of the events that happened in that trip were covered in an article that appeared in Sunday's News Gazette Travel section, an article which I prepared for the News Gazette so that people could understand that, that the purpose of the trip was that we were invited to be there as their guests, and that they were honoring the veterans of America through the, our community. Of course, they're also interested in associations that we have at the university and their connection with the University of Luxembourg. So I just thought that it would be appropriate to mention that amazingly enough, we've received this package, and several of us have received this package, and will probably be placing some of these contents at the local library. And it's through the, the sister city program's whole focus is goodwill, citizenship, and peace through understanding, community to community and person to person.
Aaron.
So while we're still, before we get out of public input, I just wanted to make an announcement for those who are watching and hopefully those of you in the audience to come out to something that's been our community for quite some time now, that I happen to host an event called Speak Cafe, open mic and poetry set where young people and all, people from all walks of life get to come out and use art to express themselves. And of course, this month being Black History Month, we are, we have a theme called, says, "Ain't Gonna Let Nobody Turn Me Around." So I'm inviting the public out to Cranad Art Museum, 7:00 PM, February the 12th, this Thursday, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And before we move out of public input, I just am not going to sit here and not respond to something that I thought was absolutely inappropriate from my colleague, Mr. Madigan, to say that the individuals who have come here over the past year and have expressed their concerns about policing or about, in particular, about tasers, to charact, to characterize them as criminals was absolutely inappropriate. Because I know most of these individuals personally, many of them do not even have criminal records, and they do not live in places where, or some of them may, may live in places where the police are called often. But to characterize the individuals who are concerned about the abuse or possible abuse of tasers as criminals is completely inappropriate. And that's all I'll say about that.
Just a quick response?
I would prefer that we just move on.
Well, but because my name was used in debate, I have the right. So just a quick response. That was not what I was saying at all. I was not talking about a single person who came before the council. I'm just talking about, overall, the police are working in the areas of the community where the crime is happening. So I apologize if you, if you took me the wrong way. That was not what I was saying at all about anyone who came here, and I'm glad every single person came here and made their feelings known. But that was not what I was saying at all.
I would like to echo Aaron's comments about the Poetry Cafe. My son took advantage of that many times, and it's a very enjoyable event. So thank you for hosting that, Aaron. And I would encourage people to take advantage of it. Okay, now, let's get on with the agenda here. Motion for Brick Street Reconstruction with Concrete, Broadway Avenue. We have a staff report from Craig Schonkweiler, Assistant City Engineer.
So I have a short presentation for you tonight. Tonight, we're going to talk about the Broadway Avenue improvements from Stevens Drive to Oakland Avenue. Basically, we're seeking direction from council on how to address the pavement system. I'm going to talk a little bit about the existing Brick Street network that we have, the condition of the pavement that's out there, what alternatives for you to consider with regard to the pavement, and then cost comparisons of those alternatives. This is a map showing the existing Brick Street network that we have currently in Urbana. Basically, the center of the map is the core of Urbana. What you see in red are all the existing Brick Streets that remain in the city. It's about three and a half, 3.4 miles of streets in Urbana, out of about, relatively speaking, about 140 miles of road. You can see that it's around the core. I mean, it's basically the older part of town is where most of the Brick Streets are at. This project is located in the northern part of Urbana. To the left is Crystal Lake Pool and Park. To the right is a residential area. To the south is a commercial area, and to the north, Broadway Avenue heads up to Country Club Road up there on the north. These are pictures of the existing pavement condition. On the left, you can see that, basically, we've laid a straight edge and measured the approximate rut depth. I mean, in this particular location, it's about five and a half inches of rut depth. To give you a relative comparison, anything beyond an inch or two is poor. Of note, on the left picture here, it's what I would call a zipper line. When you see the bricks begin to separate like that, they're about to come apart. And we've seen that on several of our other Brick Streets where they will actually, the base compresses, and then the water gets in there, and it can actually buckle the pavement up. These are more pictures here. So we have an uneven, severely rutted pavement. We have areas where we've patched it with asphalt just to get a decent ride on this street. Of note, this street is a bus route, so we do get buses running up and down the street. It is not a bike route, but we do have a fair amount of bicyclists that do use this, this road. The best that we can tell, it's about at least over 75 years old, the bricks are. We did find an aerial photo from 1940 that showed the bricks. So it's been around for quite a while. The street is a minor collector. The traffic volumes do vary from, say, 2,600 vehicles per day up to 6,400, and that's over the last 20 years. We have seen some decline when the pool was closed, and then Washington School, you know, was closed. But we do anticipate, or we are seeing about another 1,000 vehicles per day due to the pool, and about another, potentially, 1,800 vehicles per day with regard to the Washington School if it became an early childhood center. Another note, on the right side of your photos here, there's an existing sidewalk that's about four or five feet wide. We do have tentative talks with the Urbana Park District to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to widen that sidewalk or reconstruct it to an eight-foot-wide sidewalk that would run from basically the south entrance to Crystal Lake Park, which is near Stevens Drive, up through, tentatively, up through the north entrance to Crystal Lake. That would be with an intergovernmental agreement. That would be a separate, separate agreement that we would come to council here in a couple of months after we hash out the details on that. The park district would, would front the money, or we would front the money, they would pay the, pay the city back for that, to widen that sidewalk out. Today, we're not talking about that, but I just wanted to bring that up, that that's on the horizon. So the pavement alternates for consideration, basically, we looked at, one alternate was to patch what we have, basically repair the deteriorated areas. The second one would be to, say, take it out, put it back in, I mean, in brick. A third alternate would be to take it out and put it back in concrete. Of note, with alternate one, the patch, if you look in yellow here, the deteriorated areas are about 60% of the surface area. Typical guidelines, once you get about quarter of the, of the surface area, you would go ahead and replace the pavement. That can slide depending upon, you know, how bad the pavement is, but in this case here, the point is that when you get to 60%, the pavement's pretty bad, and that when you go to patch 60%, what typically happens is you'll end up being, you'll end up patching the remaining 40%, you know, within 10, 15 years from now. This is a cost comparison. We give ranges. We don't know exactly the cost, but this is what we can derive from the best data that we have. So in essence, to repair, we're talking about $600,000, $700,000, just to repair the pavement. If we were to replace it with brick, you know, we're looking at up to $1 million to do that. If we were replacing concrete, we're looking at $350,000, $400,000. Now, keep in mind, this is pavement system repair. This isn't drainage upgrades. This isn't curb and gutter, any ramps and things like that. We do have currently budgeted about $600,000 in the general revenue fund for this project. So today, we're just talking apples to apples, which is the pavement system itself. We did send out notification to the adjacent residents and business owners or property owners, and to let them know that we would be discussing this with you tonight. To date, I haven't received any responses, one way or another, with regard to this issue. As I did mention, adequate funds are currently available to reconstruct in this calendar year with concrete. Additional funds to reconstruct the streets with brick has not been identified. So at this time, I'll open it up to questions.
Okay. Mike, then Dennis.
So under alternate three, the $350,000 to $400,000 to remove and replace with concrete, does that, so what you're saying is there's no design work, there's no, no upgrading of sidewalks or curb cuts or anything like that in that, or what's the status there?
This is a pavement system comparison. The additional funds to get up to the $600,000 would include repairing damaged sidewalk, doing the necessary curb cuts, repairing the curb. If we can salvage, we will salvage, but if we have to, we could replace that with that additional money that's already budgeted.
So when you redo a road like this, there's not a requirement, like through ADA, that you must?
There is a requirement, yes. And that's actually, the, these, these dollars are just for the pavement system, but the additional funds that we have allocated cover the ADA guidelines.
Which you would have to do?
Yes. Yes.
So then what's the all-in cost? What's the all-in estimate?
Well, basically, if you take alternate three, and, you know, we're looking at another 150, 200, 250,000 for, to get to 600,000. I mean, that's the all-in for concrete is 600,000. So if we added, if we went to alternate number two, as an example, with the bricks, I mean, you're looking at another 250, 300,000 dollars.
Right. So concrete, all-in, engineered, designed...
Six hundred, yeah.
Does that include the monitoring of the, of the...
Yeah. Keep in mind, we're doing all of this work with in-house staff, the design and the construction observation with in-house.
I know a couple of times you've come back for overtime for things like that, too, though. You don't anticipate any of that?
Well, you know, to date, the overtime really was Windsor Road, you know, which is a unique situation. But typically, no, we don't come back for overtime.
Okay, so 600,000 all-in?
Yeah.
Dennis, then the mayor.
I know that, okay, let me ask. I know for the city, for the city sidewalks, we have a, a policy about replacement and that some, in some neighborhoods on some streets, the sidewalks were considered to be, replacement would be, would be preferred because these are considered like historic elements of the city. I can't remember if they are, if there are designations to the city streets as well that are brick. Do you know whether there are, whether some of the streets, such as like on Nevada or on Illinois, are considered, the first, the first preference would be to retain them as, as the historic Brick Streets that they are? And would that also apply, then, to this section of Broadway?
It is my understanding there's a city policy that, yes, to preserve and protect the Brick Streets.
The streets.
Yes.
And have you consulted with the Urbana Historic Preserve, Historic Preservation Committee, the HBC?
No.
Wouldn't that be wise to do before you bring this to us?
Well, I, we came to you folks because it's, it's basically a fiscal issue.
A fiscal issue.
At this point. Now, you know, we did look whether or not it was within an historic area, and it's not within a historic area. But it really came down to a cost consideration, and I'll just be frank with you. If, if we were to pursue alternate number two or one, the money is not there in this current fiscal year. So we would have to wait several fiscal years to build that fund up to pay for the bricks. Now, you know, I will tell you, as an engineer, you know, the Brick Roads are, are great in the perspective, there are very little maintenance for us to, you know, it's just when they go, they go and go all-in, and then we, you know, all of a sudden, we're in an emergency situation where we have to close roads. And we've had that with McCullough Street, if you recall, a couple of years ago. So we saw this as a street that is one of our worst riding streets. It's got the, one of the worst set of foundations. It's an uneven street. So we felt that it's more than due to get replaced at this time. So we came to council to get direction, but certainly, if you wanted to table it, we could do that and seek, seek approval. It, you know, again, you know, we have a funding issue, too.
All right. Can I, can I ask you about the alternative, the, well, alternate number one, you said repair would cost six to 7,000 dollars.
Yeah.
And it's to repair the sag, the only, the, only the, you said, 60% area of the street?
Mm-hmm.
Which the bricks have subsided.
Right.
Which is really the problem. The bricks themselves are wearing like iron.
Right.
But the, the base under the road has subsided.
Yes.
And so we have these, these troughs in the road. So is that, is alternate number one a replacement of brick for brick?
It would be replacing brick, repairing the base.
Yeah.
And then putting the brick on top.
Okay. All right. So it would be replacing brick for brick?
Yes.
And you said that you have six, you have up to $600,000 for the repair of this road?
Yes.
So there's no really, so that could be done, and this, this, this particular road could be retained as a historic Brick Paved Road in this area, right? We just wouldn't be dealing with curbs or sidewalks? Is that correct?
Right. But, but per, as was noted, per law, when we do a, when we touch the pavement, we do have to fix the, make it ADA compliant.
Okay.
So that would...
And that has to do with historic as well as regular standard streets?
Well, it doesn't, yeah. It doesn't matter what street it is. When you touch the pavement and you do a reconstruction or a resurfacing, and actually, they've encompassed that to even some ceiling projects, you have to make it in compliance with the American Disabilities Act.
Okay. So there'd be considerable...
So, so we would have to add in, like per Mr. Madigan's, we would have to add in another $250,000.
But right now, you've got 600,000 that you could do it, as far as just the street itself.
Right.
And so maybe in a future year, you don't have to do this all at once, do you? Or are you required to do this contemporaneously? Or can you then add the, the ADA requirement repair the following year in a new budget? repair the following year in a new budget?
Well, I, you know, I think there is some flexibility to that, but typically, we will, when we get to the level of reconstructing, we will go ahead and fix the ramps while we're doing the work. We will fix and, and try to make it, I mean, we have to make it in compliance with the American Disabilities Act, or we use our transition plan, which is a, a plan that notes deficiencies.
Yeah. So, there's ways of doing it that we could pursue, right?
I, I think the key, the, the point to keep in mind, though, is when a pavement is showing signs of sixty percent deterioration, the other forty percent is not far behind. So, it's not a matter of, well, we replace the sixty, and then we hold it, and then the other forty stays forever. It's usually what happens is by that time, the other forty comes behind it fairly quick.
It really depends on the subsurface of the, of the street building. I mean, we've got, I've lived near Illinois Avenue, and the only, the only repair works that have been done that in the seventy-five years that that street's been in existence was when they were putting sewer lines in. There, there haven't been really subsistences and all that, so there's no guarantee that the entire street would fail.
No, but I would just say, from my professional judgment, it's, it's more than likely.
Okay.
We, we did, keep in mind, too, we did do pavement cores, so we hired a company to go out, and they did do pavement cores, which means they take a slice of the pavement, they look at the base. The bricks are, in essence, on earth, dirt. And then with the repetitive loading, particularly of the, the heavy bus traffic, that, that's what you're seeing is the uneven pavement.
I think Bill, I think Bill wants to add to this, and then Mayor Press.
And that's fine. Go ahead. I, what I'm doing is I'm just being an advocate for trying to save what we have of our brick streets, because that's one of the unique things that we do have, and we know that the bricks themselves practically never were out.
Sure.
And we have a stockpile of extra bricks that we could use for replacing bricks.
Yeah.
You know, and.
Let's, let's save, let's save the discussion for after. We have two people in the, of the pub, from the public who want to speak, too. Bill?
Just a, a bit of history on this particular stretch of Broadway Avenue. Within the last twenty years, we did do some patching on Broadway, maybe five to ten percent of the pavement. And here Craig is coming to you, probably less than twenty years now, to show you that at that time, we fixed all that was in this repair at that time, but now at the sixty percent level. So, the little bit of patching we did in the five, ten percent of the pavement done about twenty years ago is now blossomed into sixty percent of the pavement. So, we tried to take that approach of repairing just a little bit, but it's still, it's still failing. That base is failing.
Mayor?
Yeah. My question is about this over time. These are the costs of redoing it right now, but how long do you expect a concrete road to last versus a brick road, if you started new?
Well, obviously, the old brick roads have lasted a long time. I will say nowadays, the bricks aren't built the same as they were back then. I know that. But a, a concrete road, well-maintained, up to forty years.
Okay. And if you had the bricks, I mean, I'm just wondering about the annual maintenance cost, because this is just like a one-shot look at it, but you really have to look at it over time? So, how would this change if you did it for five years, ten years, fifteen, twenty, looking out into the future, on what is the really least expensive way to approach this?
Well, I think, I think if you looked at the, like, the brick rehab, the, the patching cost, I mean, you would, as we, as Bill noted, in ninety-two, it was patched, but now it's grown from, you know, the ten or fifteen percent up to sixty percent. So, in time, you're going to basically have these periodic repairs that you're going to have to do. If you took that, what we usually do is we'll forecast them out, and then you bring them back to zero. I think over time, you're going to find that alternate number three is probably your most cost-effective.
I'm talking about alternate two versus alternate three. If you started over again?
Okay.
And, you know, redid the base and had the same high-quality bricks? Which would end up actually costing less? Not patching?
I think alternate number three, because number two, keep in mind, when we, nowadays, when we do them, we also build a brick, concrete pavement underneath the brick pavement. So, it would be actually a concrete base, then you do a setting bed, and then you do the brick. So, years ago, they built the brick over dirt, but that's not the way it's built nowadays.
Okay. So, does that last long enough to justify the extra cost at the beginning?
In all honesty, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill?
So, when it was rebuilt in nineteen ninety-two, the twenty-five percent, were you using the concrete underneath the brick then? Did you lay the concrete? Do you remember, they laid a concrete pad and then, and brick on top of that?
I, I wasn't here in ninety-two, but.
Yeah. That's my understanding also. It was just before I started, but it was a concrete base.
Yeah. Mr. Leach says yes.
And who's anxiously waiting to talk to us.
So, did that part also fail? Part of the part that had been replaced before?
Yeah. We, we, we did find an overlay of the old plans, and we compared that to what we see now, and yes, there is some, some of the areas that were repaired back then are now failing.
Okay. And does the six hundred thousand for alternate three plus curbs and everything also include enough money to salvage the brick, if that's the way we want to salvage it, to clean it and potentially reuse it in another project, or the next phase of the boneyard, or whatever we want to do with it?
We have a large stockpile of street brick at our, what we call our wood site on Perkins Road, East Perkins. So, we really don't need any more brick. We do plan, we have enough brick stockpiled for the remaining three and a half miles of streets in town. So, as Craig mentioned, the brick itself does hold up very well, much better than, you know, brick of today's making. So, it's not like we need to stockpile more brick. The other thing is, is that to clean each brick and to palletize it and store it is very labor-intensive, and that would add a lot more cost to the project. What we've done in the past, I'm not saying we would do this now, but in the past, PACA has had a strong interest in street brick in the past, and sometimes we find a location suitable for literally dumping those brick, and then they would go through and sort through the dirt and deleterious material and salvage those brick and, and sell them to, you know, customers, that sort of thing.
This is Broadway Avenue brick. You can't find that everywhere. And, and I know it's a hundred years old, because I have relatives that have lived there for almost a hundred years.
I mean, examples of streets we've done in the last ten years has been Goodwin Avenue by King School was brick. Park Street in front of Provena, which is now Presence Hospital, was brick. And Craig mentioned McCullough Street a few years ago, that was brick. So, those brick streets, you know, we've salvaged the brick and/or we had an interest from PACA.
Okay. Thanks.
I think Bill had a, has an idea for use of those bricks in, in helping beautify the boneyard. Mayor?
We have sort of more decorative bricks in the streets that haven't held up very well in the downtown. They're crumbling, like the one on Elm Street right by Race. So, is it possible to use some of these hundred-year-old bricks to replace those?
I, I think there's possibilities, yeah, to do that, yeah.
Thanks.
Aaron?
So, you said that the, the concrete, if we just build from, if we do the whole stretch, that piece would last us probably forty years? And when you say last forty years, we would have to do the same, dig up the entire stretch and redo it in forty years, or you're saying that basically it would be forty years before we had to do anything significant to it?
Say, within forty years, you would, you would begin to see serious distress. It could push out beyond forty before you'd have to replace entirely.
Okay. And if we were to redo the entire stretch, just dig up the brick and put the, the concrete in sediment, and then the bricks on top of it, how long would that last us?
If we were to reuse the bricks that were from the existing bricks, and keep in mind, I, I think the bricks aren't the issue. It'd probably be the concrete underneath. I would say greater than the concrete pavement. It could be upwards of, I'd just say, plus forty to fifty. You know, it's, keep in mind, I'm, I'm not trying to be evasive, but, evasive, but it's really hard to pinpoint an exact lifecycle on these things. But I think when you look at the cost of doing that with respect to the cost of the concrete pavement, it's not the same cost.
And you're saying for each one of these, I guess, ways to go about doing this, the approach one, two, and three, each one that we saw, you just, we have to automatically add two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to each cost?
Yeah. We're just talking pavement costs to that. Yes, yes.
And so, we're talking about a six hundred thousand dollar difference, basically, between approach two and approach three?
Yes.
And there's no way we would make that up if that's the difference up front?
It's a, it's a long, it's a long payoff. If, if, I mean, that's, if, you're talking such a long period of time, and in all honesty, I mean, when you're talking that amount of money, there are, that money can be allocated to other streets within the city, too.
Right.
Or it could even be in time, you know, maybe, you know, one idea, and I'll just throw this out, is, is what we really need to do is focus back in on the brick streets that we have to, to keep them in line and not let them get to this point. But that's a maintenance issue, and that's a funding issue, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have two members of the public wish to speak to this issue, and we'll probably get back to you. Thanks, Greg. Bob Leach. Who lives on North Broadway?
First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Ammon's appointment, and suggested he needs a sign. Pardon me? Now, about the, the brick pavement, a couple of things. I remember when the, well, I remember when I was a kid, certainly, it was from University Avenue all the way up to Country Club Road, I believe, and probably even all the way downtown Urbana was all brick. So, now, you've got this one section that's left, that's brick. Everything else is paved. Personally, I like brick streets, but they can be a real pain in the butt. The, I think they're probably, the snow crews have to be more careful with them, I think. I saw the problem that the city engineer was talking about as far as patching that street, because I remember when it was patched, and I couldn't remember how many years ago. You guys say it was, you think about twenty or something? It seems to me that, that those areas started deteriorating long before now. And I think prob, probably part of the problem there is having part of that pavement that is underlaying with concrete, and then more of it that's that old dirt base, you know? I think that maybe in itself causes some problems. I don't know. I'm not, you know, an engineer could answer that probably better. I think also that unlike some of the other brick streets in town, that bus traffic is hard on those streets. And occasionally, we'll get some big semis. I'm not sure that they're supposed to be on that stretch of road, and once they're on it, they have a hard time getting off of it, I think. But that happens, too, and, and that can be, I think, heavy traffic is, is hard on those roads. Nevada Street is brick from, what, Lincoln to Race, I believe. That street is a mess, too. I mean, it's really got some bad ruts and that zippering that you're talking about. But I think that if that were all, everything pulled up and redone, you could relay that dirt base and get back to a, a nice pavement without that, and without the, the heavy traffic, because I don't think buses go down Nevada. So, I think streets like that are a candidate for replacing the brick. I'm not sure if Broadway is. Another thing, you said that you, Bill, you said you've got enough brick to make the repairs on all the other brick streets. Well, you better have more than enough, because if, if you go and look at Broadway, there are a lot of bricks, even though I think bricks stand up over time, there are a lot of them that would, could not go back in. They're, they're actually breaking up, you know? They're not whole bricks anymore. Also, there are some areas where there have been some asphalt patches done, some pretty good-sized areas. That brick, it would be cost prohibitive to try to clean those up and reuse them, because I've tried to clean asphalt off of pavers, and it's not fun. So, I think you'd be using a whole bunch more bricks than are there to redo Broadway. The, the one thing I do like about the brick row, brick street.
You have one minute, Mr. Leach.
Okay. The one thing I do like about the, the brick streets, and even, I hate to say it, the, the divots and the bad roadway, is it slows traffic down. Now, maybe that's the, the nature of that being a arterial street? I'm not sure the designation. But traffic moves fast on that street, and no matter what you do, if, if there's any kind of way you could figure out to help keep traffic a little slower, I'd appreciate it. So, that's what I've got to say. Thanks.
Questions for Bob? Thank you. Next up, Caitlin Lynn, Caitlin Lil, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Lil, and I'm representing the Urbana Park District tonight. We would like to support, to voice our support for the proposed improvements on Broadway Avenue, specifically resurfacing the road with concrete pavement. As you know, we're an organization that cares a lot about the beautification and character of Urbana, and while we certainly appreciate the charm of the current brick, we have to acknowledge the practical benefits of resurfacing with concrete. And to us, that includes accessibility, especially with bus routes, delivery trucks, as Mr. Leach mentioned, and even our own mowers as they drive up Broadway, as they cross over from planning and operations on Kerr Street. We also know that this would improve access to some beloved Urbana facilities, including Crystal Lake Park Family Aquatic Center, the Anita Purvis Nature Center, and Bucy Woods, as well as additional features that we have planned for that north section of the park in the next two years. As Craig said, as a bonus amenity, the Park District is planning to partner with the city to simultaneously construct a new path on the east side of Crystal Lake Park, installing an eight-foot bicycle pedestrian path to improve connectivity between the south and north ends of the park. We've budgeted to repave the sidewalk from Stebbins Road up to the driveway entrance of the outdoor pool and nature center, and we're eager to see this work completed this fall. The new path will have more of a park aesthetic, taking a winding approach that will invite use and maintain the character of the oldest park in Urbana. That's all I have to say initially. Thank you for your time, and please let me know if you have any questions or concerns about the Park District's contribution to this.
Okay. Well, Aaron has a question for you.
I was just wondering, well, thank you for coming, first of all. Will the connectivity extend all the way to Park Street, or will it stop at Stebbins?
It will stop at Stebbins for now. Unfortunately, while we do have this budgeted for that section of the park, it would be cost prohibitive for us to go all the way to Park Street. However, we will be issuing a request for qualifications in the next few months to be looking at lake access, naturalization of the Crystal Lake shoreline, and general connectivity throughout the Crystal Lake Park system.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, I guess, we're going to be looking for a place to dispose of these bricks. Is that correct, Bill? Would the Park District be interested in some bricks? Would the Park District be interested in some bricks?
No comment.
No comment. Oh, okay. Well, you might ask your boss.
I'll do that. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so that's it for public input. Are there more questions for staff? I'll get into, jump in discussion here. I would, I would make one comment here. I think Mr. Leach described the sentiment of bicyclists with respect to be, to bricks as being a pain, and you know what?
I would move the committee forward with recommendation for approval, alternate number three.
Second.
It's been moved by Michael Madigan, seconded by Dan Marlin, for option three. Dennis?
Yeah, so we're going to be voting on this, and, you know, maybe this is going to be a conversion, I don't know, depending on how the council chooses. But I'd just like to say this in, as a perspective thing. So, okay, I've got a, I've traveled now to a small town about the same size as we have in Hungary for several different trips through extended family relations. And what I notice in the small industrial little town of Hungary is that in Europe, they're doing a lot of resurfacing or removing of cement, and they're placing in permeable pavers on a very large scale. Not only do, are the permeable pavers used on the streets, they also are used in different tones of brick to demarcate parking along the streets and even the curbs and the sidewalks. And in the downtown of Solnokorany, Hungary, which is certainly not, you call it a beauty city of the world, that community has put in probably like twenty streets, they've converted twenty streets to permeable pavers. And I'm wondering what they know that we don't. And if we have opportunity to retain bricks, you know, and to make, you know, well, of course, it's not going to be permeable, because we're like, we're using a substrata of cement below the bricks in our, in our imagination. Somehow, we were missing, missing the boat. And we've had parking lots in the past that have been put in by the city, which we were originally talking about permeable pavers for the parking lots. Why? Because we have these green goals in our community. As a matter of fact, we just won some award where we were becoming more efficient. Green, we were, we were awarded some conversion of resources. And, you know, this award we just received, it just was announced. And yet, there is a rather, sort of, I won't say a second-rate city in, in Hungary that is far surpassing us in its ability to convert its streets into modern green technology systems. And maybe this street is not going to be done that way because of the traffic load and buses, which I can appreciate destroy street beds. But on the other hand, when is it that the city of Urbana will actually make that commitment to put in green technology incorporated into at least our parking lots? The one place we do see that occurring is in the parking lot of the MTV, the Motor Vehicle Transportation, bus, the bus center. So, I know it costs a bit more, and maybe we don't have the money. But other communities across the world are finding ways of doing it. And, you know, I would like to see us retain as much of the brick network of sidewalks and street as we can. Not everybody loves them. But the more that we tear apart the historic nature of our, of our city, and we lose more and more buildings, edifices, and the history of our community, we're only going to be a strip mall, parking lot community in the future. Given another fifty years, there's no guarantee that the downtown will have hardly any of the, retain any of the buildings that are so unique to us today. And I just talked to the, the, one of the city planners of Champaign, and he said that sixty percent of the edifices that were there at the turn of the century in nineteen hundred, nineteen twenty have been taken down. And, okay, it's a great thing about modernism, you can't, you can't say that it's not bad to have good, modern, strong buildings. But there is a, this is a scenario that is kind of ongoing, and we lose the historic quality of our community bit by bit by bit by bit. So I'm just saying, you know, let's be aware and try to be perhaps innovative in our thinking.
Diane?
Okay. I lived on Nevada Street for twenty-seven years. I loved the brick streets. It had brick sidewalks. Even though they absolutely are a pain to ride a bike on, and you can't roller skate on them, they were a pain to push a stroller on, and they were a trip hazard. But I wouldn't have traded the charm for anything. And, and I still hope we, and I hope the city retains its commitment to Indiana, Michigan, Illinois, Nevada, the, the central core residential area. But for Broadway, the couple of factors here, the cost difference is just too much for, for me to go with charm and nostalgia. And the bus traffic up to the pool and to the park is, is heavy. And I know that the school district is also, or the adult education program is looking at Washington School for possibly adult ed centers. So there's another big source of traffic heading up there a lot. And, and the fact that, that most of the street between University and, oh, is it Perkins on the north end? What's the north? Anyway, Country Club, right. Is, is already concrete, and we just have this one stretch of brick is another factor. So I, I reluctantly will, will support converting this to concrete and hope we can devote our remaining resources to keeping the brick streets in the quieter residential areas that aren't getting that, that heavy bus traffic, I think is a big factor today.
Maybe for next week, staff can let us know what, what it is that the Europeans are using that, you know, or maybe if there's no bus traffic, no heavy truck traffic, that would make a difference on whether you could use bricks the way they're being used. And I, I would be curious to know the answer to that. Bill?
They're probably using cheap labor, for one thing. It's, it's really labor-intensive to lay the brick, I guess, but. So, yeah, this is, Broadway was probably one of my first brick streets I ever experienced, because my grandfather lived there, and probably my first experience with Urbana. So maybe that's why I live on Nevada now and have a brick street. I remember that. But I still have Aunt and Uncle who lived there, and my aunt said that absolutely she wants concrete. So that might weigh on my decision. But I think she, they do describe, you know, the bus traffic being heavy and it being, it, it being a really highly-used road, and it's loud with the brick and everything. But I, I really liked the brick there. I think it's really visible. It would have been nice if it had been maintained maybe over the years, probably a long time ago, because this has been, been going down for quite a while. But even with that, who knows with the bus traffic, if it would hold up? I did want to point out also that we're using general revenue funds from the capital replacement improvement. So that's not motor fuel tax, right? So for people that say bicyclists don't pay for streets, I think all of us are paying for this one. And we also pay for all of them that we get state grants for. So you don't have to buy gas to pay for streets. A lot of us are paying for streets. And even those of us who bicycle, when we go out of town, we buy gas, so, I don't know. I decided to throw that in there. I did have one other question. What was it? Well, maybe I'll think of it by next week. Oh, I guess with the, the extra two hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks and curbs, it sounds like the Park District is, are they paying completely for the sidewalk on the west side of the street? So is it really going to be two hundred thousand dollars just to repair two blocks of sidewalks and curbs?
Yeah, it's an approximate cost, but yes. I mean, the multi-use path, well, the eight-foot wide sidewalk on the west side is over two hundred and sixty, seventy thousand dollars itself.
But that'll be paid for mostly by the Park District?
Yeah, we would front the money, and they would pay us back. But, yeah, there is, you know, we, we program in money for, you know, improving the drainage when we can, because obviously the drainage always has an impact on the quality of the pavement life. We repair any of the curb that we can. There are driveways a lot of times that have to get fixed because of the reconstruction of the pavement. We do know through our sampling that the base is mostly fill material, poor-quality fill material, which means that there is some money in there for beyond the regular pavement system, but to dig out the poor base and put back a stronger base, and then build the pavement on top of it. So, yeah, you know, things do add up with pavements.
Okay, so it's a little extra money for then the normal estimate to replace the brick, because you have to do more of the base work?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So while you're there, Craig, one quick question. So you're going in there, you're replacing substrate and stuff, too. Is this going, is this design going to hold up? It's going to be a high-level quality that'll hold up to the bus traffic in the coming years?
Yes. That's the intent, yes. I mean, we, we take into account the loading from buses and other vehicles, but, yes.
So this will be a heavier concrete than some other, than a residential road would get?
Yeah, we, yes.
Okay.
I had a follow-up question on, so when would the Park District pay it back at the close of the, when the street is finished? Is it a lump sum? The entire amount comes back to us, or is it in payments? How would that be?
We, we have to work out the particulars of that, but in the past, what is, we've had an agreement with the Park District, and we'll usually, as soon as we pay, we submit a bill and they reimburse. So I, I am understanding that they do have money budgeted for this. So, I mean, it shouldn't be an obstacle to getting that, that sidewalk widened.
So when I talked to Bill about this earlier, I also raised the question about the east side sidewalk from Stebbins to, I don't know if it's Country Club Road. Is there any interest or any conversation about also doing those sidewalks while we're in there?
We will fix tripping hazard, try to bring it up to ADA requirements, do the ramps. But the, you know, on the west side of the road, it's to widen the sidewalk from, you know, four or five feet to eight feet. But on the east side, the width of the wall is actually right at the back of the property, I mean, right near the property line. So if we got, if we did do any widening, we would get into people's properties, which we're not really interested in doing. But we want to fix it and make it better. So, yeah, we would fix, that's part of that additional money.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All those in favor sending this to council?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Craig. Next up is ordinance number twenty fifteen two twelve, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty fourteen, fifteen, various items from finance. Liz?
All right, this is sort of a mixed bag of corrections to the budget. So I'll just run down the list for you quickly and then answer any questions. First of all, our audit costs are going to significantly exceed the budget that we have for that for several reasons. There's a number of restatements or corrections on prior-year figures. There's requirements to implement new accounting requirements, and there have been some other changes in the scope of work, so that's estimated at thirty-nine thousand dollars. It may be less, because some of that work will be done on an hourly basis. I am recommending that we budget eight thousand dollars in the Human Resources Department for management fees for the city's retirement health savings plan. This is an item that we have been paying for a number of years, but it's not been explicitly budgeted as an expenditure, and in my opinion, it should be. Also, from the general fund, we pay for a couple of development, well, we pay for a sales tax reimbursement to Meyer under a development agreement from a specific line item, and that was just not budgeted at a sufficient amount. We're going to require another hundred thousand dollars there. In reviewing the budget, I noted that there was no holiday pay budget in police investigations, when in fact, we do have to pay holiday pay, and so we will budget sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for that. And we're just going to do a little reallocation on our Metcalf contributions. They, they weren't properly distributed between police and fire, so that's really a small correction. Those first items are all in the general fund. In other funds, we will budget vocational payments to the school district. This is a longstanding agreement with the school district. However, this was previously budgeted in TIF III, which has ended, and when TIF III ended, it simply wasn't budgeted anywhere else. And so we need to meet that obligation, which we split between TIF I and TIF IV. The budget for liability claims expense and the retained risk fund is insufficient. I'm estimating that we need an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The budget was a very small amount, which was just inconsistent with what we've normally spent. In the Sister Cities Grant Fund, we have a very small expenditure of three hundred dollars, although that was not budgeted, so technically, we'd need to amend the budget. And also, in the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, somehow some funds for PEG equipment were simply overlooked in the budget process, and that's fifteen thousand thirty-seven dollars. Going back to late November, there were several items that we discussed in a budget amendment at that time that were removed before that budget amendment was approved in December. Some of those items, we addressed through budget revisions that did not require city council approval, transfers within departments. Another one of those items, we're going to drop. That item was an actuarial study that I'd recommended for the retained risk fund. We're simply going to not do that at this time. So, impact of all these changes, we would increase expenditures in the General Operating Fund by a hundred and sixty-one thousand. There are also changes in TIF I, TIF IV, retained risk fund, and retained risk reserve fund, Sister Cities Grant Fund, and Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Funds. So a fairly long list.
Good.
Yes, so where do we, I think last Monday, we gave, we voted to award the, an agreement of somewhere around two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to, what was the guy's name that we worked with for the development for downtown?
Norman Baxter.
Baxter, okay. Was that from TIF III? That was TIF I? Okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify, because I'm a little unsure, how do we determine how much money to give a developer or something like that, based upon, I, I just didn't, I don't know. Is there a formula we use when we do that?
Yeah, that's really more a question for our economic development folks, but in, in most cases, there would be some kind of formula or program that we would follow. And we'd also then always review those to make sure that we have adequate funds.
Okay. There was one other question I had about the, the, one for the hundred thousand dollars. What, why was that so off? I don't understand. Well, I mean, that's a hundred thousand dollar.
Which one are you talking about?
The development agreement?
Oh, you know, I, I honestly can't explain that. The budget for this year is less than what we spent last year and what we spent the year prior to that. So I can only assume that in the process of putting together the budget, somehow there was an error and the correct amount wasn't budgeted, and we were clearly obligated to make those payments.
And that's an agreement, it says, for any annexed properties for up to five years?
Well, there's two things that are in that line item, so I wanted to put all of that out there. The, the biggest part of that is the development agreement with Meyer, but also there's a state law that requires us to reimburse townships a certain part of property tax for five years when we annex, so that's also budgeted in that line item. when we annex, so that's also budgeted in that line item.
So, the five years does not apply to the development agreement with Meyer?
I don't recall off the top of my head what the term of that agreement is, but no, it doesn't fall under the same group.
Okay.
Diane?
Is this extra audit cost just a one-year thing? I know you, I know we've talked about the extra scope of work and that this is going to be a, this is a new audit firm, so they're taking a look at everything with fresh eyes.
Right, it's a new audit firm. We've had a lot of turnover, so there's several things that are driving this, but next year, I think we should be down to a more normal level, which would be about $60,000.
Okay. And then I question about liability claims. What kinds of, what contributed to the extra $150,000?
Again, I'm going to compare this to the development agreement line. The budget just isn't sufficient. It's not consistent with what we've spent in the past. I'm going to put that down to an error in budgeting.
Wow. And then, the last thing, one of the things that we had talked about last fall was, there was a proposal to add an additional staff member to do forecasting and audit work. Is that being put on hold, or will that, will we see that in the next budget? Or how did that get resolved?
We've been able to find some funds to do something on a temporary basis, and if there are funds available in next year's budget, we will make a request to make that an ongoing thing. But for right now, there's no permanent position for that.
So, but that person is working full-time?
Right, on a temporary, full-time basis.
I had a follow-up.
Okay, yeah. It would be good to know when the Meyer agreement's over. I thought that was a ten-year agreement. I don't know if Mr. Simon has an answer to that.
I'm not familiar with the Meyer agreement at all. Somebody would provide it to me, I could review it.
Yeah, we can get an answer maybe for next week.
Yeah, we could look it up and get it to you, but it's been going on for a while, so I imagine.
It must be getting close to being done. I can't remember, was it a ten-year or a 15-year agreement?
We can dig it out and let you know.
Okay. Aaron, sorry.
Yeah, and I think you spoke to one of the questions I had about the actual agreement, how long it would last, because that's the bulk of the money that you, yeah.
Yes, correct.
So, in the retained risk reserve fund, exactly, so, we just moved the 150 from the reserve fund into the retained risk fund. And so, how much do we have in the risk reserve fund?
Oh, I'm going to say it's between $2 and $3 million.
Self-insurance, that's what it is. All right, thank you.
Yeah, actually, if you look at that line, it estimates the fund balance would then, after that transfer, be 2.6 million.
I'm sorry, I have one other one, Charlie. The existing agreement on the vocational payment, I can, can we get staff to bring that to us as well? So, I'd like to be able to read that, whatever the existing agreement is with the school district on the vocational payments, because I'm not sure what a vocational payment is. Is it for our schools to have vocational training? I don't understand what that is.
My understanding is for the schools to have vocational training, that we were interested in making sure that students got that.
Right, there's a specific provision, is my understanding, in TIF law that allows us to make payments to the school district specifically for that purpose.
And those payments can come from any TIF if we wanted to. It is, because we're using TIF money. That's not what we normally do, though. Am I mistaken?
Yes, we normally have made vocational payments to the school district from three tests, from TIF I, TIF III, and TIF IV. The difference this year is that, well, A, it wasn't budgeted, which was an error, but B, TIF III has ended, so we're paying only from TIF I and TIF IV.
Okay, thank you.
A motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we forward the corrections to the budget, annual budget, ordinance 2015-02012 to council with approval.
A second. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is a, is an ordinance, a premium redevelopment agreement with 129 North Race LLC, and it has a companion budget ordinance, ordinance number 2015-214 that goes with it. Libby Tyler?
I'm very pleased tonight to bring this redevelopment agreement forward. This would involve some local businesspeople and developers who have purchased the School for Cosmetology School building on Ray Street, just north of Main Street, and they are proposing to revitalize this historic property and to reactivate the building with multiple tenants, as well as to improve and to activate the building's exterior, and ultimately, housing 20 to 35 employees and investing $330,000 beyond the purchase. The terms of the redevelopment agreement would include modernizing the building's interior, which previously had been used for cosmetology school and prior to that, an engineering company, consulting firm. That would include upgrades to contemporary materials, finishes, and fixtures, creating more openings in the building for visibility to the interior, to bring it to a more commercial use, and to complement Ray Street, activating the building facades, including adding glass storefronts, awnings, and signage, and creating outdoor patio seating on the west and south sides of the building. And finally, to program the interior space for multiple users to include the following minimum occupancies, at least one retail tenant, at least one creative industry office tenant, and a small business incubator or co-working space. So, the specific tenants that the development group are working with and looking to work with include a photography studio and gallery, a dance studio, a cafe slash wine bar, a tech startup tenant, and a low-tech incubator or co-working space. The project would work to preserve the historic character of the building and help to relate it to its surroundings. I think that this is a significant proposal because it is the first project to come to us as a result and a companion of the Boneyard Creek Improvement Project. It would benefit from that proximity and would also complement the other developments we've seen along Ray Street, including our historic Courier Cafe building and the new Stratford Apartments, newer building of the Stratford Apartments, along with the renovation of that, successful renovation to include the Masita Grill. This proposal is consistent with many of the city's plans and policies that we've discussed and worked on in recent years, including our TIF Downtown Redevelopment Plan, our Downtown Plan, council goals, and the Downtown Market Study that we prepared along with that Downtown Plan. So that this would help to create a new center of activity for Ray Street in the downtown, and hopefully, would then lead to additional development along the Boneyard, and hopefully, impetus as well for the first segment of the Boneyard Creek to the west and the south. The developers who are involved in this proposal are here tonight, Chen Chi Yu, Dustin Kelly, and Matt Cho. They have formed 129 North Race LLC. You will know that Matt Cho, of course, has a strong track record in the downtown, in particular, in this portion of the downtown. And Chen Chi and Dustin are also local business people as well, and have, local entrepreneurs who have built businesses and chosen to invest in Urbana and in downtown Urbana. It's a fairly straightforward agreement. It would involve a line of credit up to a maximum of $82,500 that would be drawn against eligible expenses. This would involve up to 25% reimbursement of eligible expenses on the project, which is, fits within the formulas that we've used on these redevelopment agreements, and looking at the payback and the benefits of the project. Because the TIF II is, will be expiring in 2022, which is prior to the term that we might normally see in a redevelopment, we would see increments of $24,000 to that fund. And more significantly, in this case, in calculating, the return on investment will be the, the sales, local sales tax to the city, school district, and the county, and that would be calculated at $160,000. So, the two, the property tax increment and the sales tax, would be recouping this amount in approximately four years. We've looked for the budget amendment at the balance in TIF II, and there are sufficient funds. However, the budget would need to be amended to allocate these specific funds to the specific project. And there would be, there would be remaining funds for some of the other redevelopment activities that we anticipate coming up. We know that there has been a very large fiscal hit on the downtown TIFs because of our large investment on the Boneyard Creek Improvement Project and on Main Street and Ray Street and the bridge and Broadway, and it's, you know, it's looking great, and now it's time to continue with these projects to help energize and activate our historic downtown. But soon, we hope the private sector will be able to continue to build out and to begin to complete our vision that we have for the downtown. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's a really very illustrative package that shows you the vision that the developers have put together. They are here tonight to answer questions as well.
Mike?
Okay, thanks, Libby. Just a couple of questions. First of all, not being a developer, what does "activate the facade" mean?
I think that's, yeah, that's a good term. I think what we're looking at there, if you look at the building now, it's really, it's a nice historic building, but it's more of an office building. You can't see inside, you're not drawn to it. So, by activating that, would be adding more openings, more large windows, and also, these, because it's surrounded by parking, the idea would be to add outdoor seating, and that will make it more of a draw. And I'm sure developers, to have a design background, then they would be able to expand upon that if you'd like.
So, make it look better?
Yes, more appealing, more active, yes.
Yeah, it's a pretty pedestrian-looking building right now, so, but the goal here is to activate it or to make it look nicer, more inviting, more appealing.
And then the pedestrians will want to go there.
Right. If you build it, they will come, right? So, hey, so my other question then is, help me do the math, so 160,000 in local sales tax, city, school, district, and county, and ROI of four years. So, that dollar amount is arrived at by figuring what the gross revenues of the businesses in there are going to be, I assume, it would have to be?
It's the type of business, and then we'll take comparables, and this is to all the taxing bodies, so this is a larger, a larger benefit.
Right.
It's reflected here. So, the city portion would be a portion of that.
112, right. So, what would the gross revenues, what are we seeing the gross revenues of this business, of this building and the businesses therein would be to arrive at that 160,000?
Yeah, I think, maybe I would ask the developer, Matt, would you, the, come on up, and Dustin and Chen Chi, maybe we need a third chair here. Okay. Yeah, they're here and they can.
When it's green, it's on.
Okay. Basically, what we did is we projected, based on Cafeteria &amp; Co., which is a hybrid pizza and coffee shop. That's how we generate the estimate. We definitely discounted it just by, I guess, the size and the square footage.
Right.
In addition, there is an incubator, a low-tech incubator in the bottom, that we believe will possibly generate, similar to like the Colab effect of several small creative-use businesses that could generate, based on what we're seeing at Colab, I think the highest for one of the businesses is around 30K gross for a single proprietor within a creative mix-type tenancy. So, we're estimating about 150 from that, plus about 650 on the low end, possibly 800 on the high end for the cafe. In addition, I didn't know how to calculate necessarily the upstairs tech tenant in terms of their revenue, because it completely depends on the type of tech tenancy that we get at, so we were very, I guess, conservative in that estimate. Outside of that, I think there's a range in the, maybe page seven, where we start like 600 up till 900, I think, of revenue is what we're estimating at. And the employees, I think, what we're predicting, what we're really trying to target is a five to 10% up top, at minimum, five in the incubator, and then with the dance studio, photography studio, and the cafe, that makes up the remaining, I guess, 10 or so employees, so 10, 20, 25, if we hit the upside 30.
Thank you.
Dennis?
And so, you've identified apparently types of businesses you expect to draw to the, to your business in your subsets. I mean, you're talking about a photography studio, a dance studio, a cafe. Are any of those slots committed, so that you know you have a tenant for those?
Yes.
And is that why you're saying there is going to be a dance studio, there is going to be a?
Yep. We have basically a commitment from the cafe that wants to stay anonymous for now. I know that's not a lot of good faith right now, but we've had multiple discussions in terms of their occupancy in the space. There is currently a photographer in the space, and with the Boneyard Arts Festival coming up, we're identifying two or three other photographers to help occupy the space, along with the current owner, the current photography studio owner. In the basement, there is, I believe, Neutral Cycle is taking, is storing down there, but they are one of those interesting types of companies that are spinning off all kinds of different products, and I think when we talk about activating the facade, one of the main things of having them take that space was that they wanted to use the parking lot for festivals or bike-related type events. So, I guess if that's kind of more elaborates on what activating the facades mean.
Could I ask another question? So, it's very interesting that I, I mean, I think you're, I'm very interested in the fact that you're going to be adding amenity to the back of the building, because that ultimately is going to be facing the Boneyard, which we hope will become a larger, you know, project and completed, completed beautification plan. It's going to be, looks like patio or terrace, but the food is going to be in the front, so is there, I guess you've thought out about like how that process works where people can get back to the patio?
Right.
And will it have other uses besides cafe use?
I think for the ground floor, the main anchors are going to be the dance, photography, and cafe. There is a small 250-square-foot piece that if we are able to find a retail pop-up tenant, this is again, is another, I think, lesson learned from Colab, is that the storefront, while on Main Street and prominent to a lot of pedestrians, because Colab is primarily an office, the storefront, it's been kind of tricky to coordinate. Something with a cafe use where you're, there's a small retail space targeted with that, I think, could be a secondary use of that space, if not another smaller event space or a conference room, kind of similar to Atlanta Bread Company out by Neal Street, and now they have that room where you can reserve, so another business-type use in addition to kind of what we've learned from the back of Pizza M.
I think Diane was next.
Yes, great to see you. I had a chance to actually tour this building, so I appreciate there's a lot of space in there with lots of potential, so that's exciting. My question is, with the redevelopment agreement actually requiring and going, you know, one retail tenant, does that include this pop-up retail, or is that a different retail tenant?
I believe when I spoke to Brandon, he mentioned that the cafe tenant would be the retail.
Cafes retail.
Right.
And then you have to have one creative industry office tenant and a small business incubator or co-working space. I just wondered, why do we require in such specific, why are we so specific about what goes into this space? What if you get into this and you realize, oh, we can have two?
What if, if you get into this and you realize, oh, we can have two, two small business incubators and we don't want the dance studio? Does this development agreement require you to have, you know, it seems to be too specific? Are they all like this, or are they...
I mean, this is a re-tenanting of space that we want to be vital and active, and these terms were negotiated. I think they are general, at least it doesn't say dance studio, but, you know, we could certainly work with the developers, but we're comfortable with the definition of the project, and they are as well. And I think that we're, you know, very imminent, developers are very imminent in the re-tenanting. So, you're right, in a normal redevelopment agreement, you might see broader categories, but I think it helps us to be very specific in this case so that we can maximize the activities that we see, so.
I just, I just worry that, number one, we're locking a developer into something that may not work out, and then they'll be back asking to change this development agreement, and...
We will come back with amendments if that's necessary, but...
And there's no, and there's no requirement for housing in this one, or apartment space, which I realize there's one across the street, so.
Not anticipated.
Not a big deal.
But it's a, a comment, and, you know, if we can discuss and, you know, if there's a, you know, minor wording change, that might help, but look at that.
I don't know, I just, it just struck me as being far more specific than we typically see, so I just wondered, but, okay.
They're not complaining. Bill?
Yeah, if you need any bricks for your outdoor patio, I know where you can get some.
Well, we were just discussing that back there.
Oh, great.
How many, how many dump trucks worth would you like?
Think about it.
I guess. There's plenty of bricks.
Could use some bricks.
Is the upstairs, was it used as apartments before?
No, that was actually the classroom upstairs, and not to, I guess, drag this on, but like, we originally had a training center that was interested in, and it would have been a great use of that space since it was already built out as classrooms, but I think the mix that we're trying to create right now is possibly an office tenant upstairs. It would be a great apartment, but again, that'd probably be a lot more development cost than, than we would like to take on at this point, in addition to all the units next door.
Kind of the same question as Mike did about activation. I know I've talked to you before about activating spaces, and I always imagined people being in the spaces, I was trying to figure out how you activate a facade, but I have seen some of the outdoor movies, so if you need a movie screen, I guess maybe you could activate a facade that way, too.
Right, I believe someone applied using our site as a potential location for the movie nights that was, I guess, tested this summer. In addition, I think the patio space, especially when you're going north or leaving Courier, seeing people on the south side of that, you know, I don't know if you see the metal staircase, that's one of the spaces that I'm definitely interested in, since it's viewable from Main Street as well as from Courier, which brings a lot of traffic on a consistent basis, so.
Okay, great.
That's kind of the activation.
And then just, I guess this isn't for you, but there's a technical correction. Attachment A, it still has Stevens Building. There's a cut and paste, probably need to take out Stevens Building and put in a different building.
Attachment A?
Attachment A, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Diane?
Well, I was, I was just gonna move ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero-two dash zero-one-three to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second. Who wants to flip for it? Moved by Diane, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have a follow-up ordinance, ordinance number twenty fifteen to fourteen, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, reflecting the redevelopment agreement, TIF, TIF distribution. Is there a motion?
Yes.
It's been, it's been moved by Aaron and seconded by Dennis to send this to council with a recommendation for approval, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries as well. Okay, last up tonight is ordinance number twenty fifteen to sixteen, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section three forty-three, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for SZDB Incorporated doing business as Vine Street Marathon at five-oh-eight South Vine Street. Mayor?
Yes, this is a situation where there is a new...
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah, Michael, yeah, Mike.
Okay, sorry.
State law requires me to recuse myself as a local liquor license holder.
Okay, this is a case where there's a new owner of this, of the business, which had a Class C license, and so the way we do it to keep the total the same is when the old owner leaves, we reduce it automatically. So, it went down to twenty-one C licenses, and this is going to bring it back up to where it was before at twenty-two. So, there's no net increase in the number of licenses. And we think the new owner is, you know, a good business person, so I would recommend that you approve it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve and send to council.
Okay. Moved by Dennis and seconded by Aaron, seconded it already, so any further discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? Okay, that goes to council. Seeing no further business before us, this meeting is adjourned.